Council President Sheldon Meyer.
President.
Councillor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councillor Alan McGurran.
Here.
Councillor Tom Mellon.
Here.
Councillor Robert Orr.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Forsyth's oldest daughter passed away on Sunday, so he is taking care of those issues now. I know, I don't have any details, don't ask me any questions, I don't know anything. And Susan Snow is also dealing with family-related issues, similar in nature.
And for the question of wages?
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Remove.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, as unanimously. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Agreed.
And the consent agenda has a newer process of discussion, so include that as part of the consent agenda. And so we have a motion, and second?
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote, again, as unanimously. Announcements and correspondence. The Oregon Coastal Park will be held at Three Rivers Casino and Resort on Wednesday, Thursday, August 21 and 22, and resignation is required. And our second announcement is that the Planning Commission will consider adoption of the findings of fact, conclusion to law, and decision regarding Little Woking Phase III subdivision as regularly scheduled meeting on August 22, 2019. And do you want to say anything further about that, Jamie?
Well, go ahead.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Some people signed up, and we'll allow three minutes apiece for input. Kath Cook.
Good evening, Kath Cook. I live on Little Woking Drive where the proposed development is to take place. I have a couple of, well, a lot of concerns, but of course, number one is the wastewater, stormwater treatment proposal. The second is traffic. I think if we're going to allow approximately two cars per home up there, we're going to have a huge increase of traffic on our little road. The third thing I'm concerned about is just a little rumor going around that should this development not go through, that in fact it will be logged. And, oh, it's just a question?
It will be what?
Logged.
Log?
Yeah. Yeah, do, sorry.
That's fine.
So, that's just my questions. And I'd like it on public record about those three matters to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Margie Kelly?
Hello. I just have a couple of questions myself with regard to the development. One of the first things that I was concerned about in reading information regarding that, it said in the exhibit B ordnance number 181, "In the event that sediment is inadvertently deposited in a wetland stream or lake, the developer shall immediately contact the city engineer and coordinate remedial actions with the city." And this concerned me largely because it seems sort of like putting the fox in charge of the hen house, which is to say that how would we know or expect them to actually come forward? It seems that perhaps we could use an independent inspector for oversight rather than relying upon the developer to just do the right thing. Also, because it did mention the city engineer, I looked at whom we have in the city on their list, and there was no city engineer that I saw listed there, so that too is a concern. I was also wondering that if a concerned citizen should actually see evidence that there's contaminated runoff, is there somebody to whom we can bring that information to his attention so that it can be addressed? And I think that was, that was Margie. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Hall?
I'd like to give my time to Aaron Bowen. Go ahead. Now? Yes. My name's Aaron Bowen. I live at 5500 Little Woking. There's a couple of copies. Again, it's with regard to the development of Little Woking. I attended the Planning Commission meeting and watched the way in which they had gone down the checklist of, you know, check marks and things like this. And my concern was there wasn't a lot of apparent, at least at the planning level that I attended, where they went to see if everything was coordinated, everything matched. And I say that because, one, there's a storm or a stormwater management plan that was developed in 2007, which was read and discussed and accepted as part of the planning meeting. And in that, very extensive details on how the stormwater streams collected, oils removed, and allowed to percolate through. It sounds like it's a pretty good idea. It looks like it would work. And it's used, I think, Portland's management plan for doing so. But then if you look at the platmat that accompanied the application, that information is not in there. And it's my understanding that the platmat takes precedence over CCNRs, plans, and things like that. The platmat doesn't have anything like that. It actually has a stormwater gully that runs from the cul-de-sac straight down and connects up into the lake. There is no effort, it was in the platmat, to migrate through, collect, allow to seep this water. Then the second issue is that stormwater drain that they have on the platmat dumps directly on top of an active spring that feeds Little Woking Lake, which again, it's on the, actually it's on the wetlands inventory. I attached it to the back of a paper. Identifies it. And that's protected water as well. And then the third thing was, I just discovered that this morning. On the platmat, page three, under covenants and restrictions, item number four, it says that Woking Lake shall not be used as a domestic water source. And I understand the issues related to that, but there are several residences that take water out of Little Woking for domestic, for water use, but it's defined as two unnamed streams. So I'm wondering if this platmat gets, you know, put into play or accepted, what does that do to those folks who have a right to draw water from their two unnamed streams? And one last thing. I think we ought to start asking the water testing group to test Little Woking Lake as part of our regular scheduled tests. Our next test, I wish some of the snow's here, is next week on Tuesday. And it may be too soon to talk about that, but every month or so, we do test the main lake and test Silkus. And it would be wise, I think, on our part to also test Little Woking.
My name's Rick Briggs. I signed down the form down there. I went to give Aaron three more minutes, my minutes.
That's just the first three minutes.
You still got three?
Okay, go ahead. But I guess that's about all I've got. We've got other things to put up there by all means. I tried to keep it under three minutes. Thanks. That's good. But anyway, it's written out in longhand form here, and so I kind of summarized it. Basically, I don't believe that the Planning Commission took the, all the steps necessary to make sure that they submit a plan, all works within the federal, state, and local requirements for protection of the environment and the quality of the drinking water. Those are my concerns.
I have a question. Do we have a copy for each one of us that we can study?
I only need three, but I'll count my other ones.
I just wanted to read.
We'll get some copies later.
Yeah, well, I can send some more.
Thank you.
All right.
Pat Briggs?
I live at 5465 Huckleberry Lane. And I, this is also related to what Aaron said, but this is part of the stormwater management plan. And it was, the date is 2007 on this. And I'm on page three under stormwater hydrology summary. It says, it's talked, "The current use of the site is for timber production. Stormwater runoff from the site sheet flows to the existing roadside ditch or to the lakeshore. The roadside ditch transports the flows transverse to the hillside and releases it through one of several cross culvers. Flows below," this is the important part, "flows below the existing road will travel as sheet flow or shallow concentrated flows to Little Woking Lake. Even though the topography of the site reveals a valley-like area in the central common area of the project, no drainageway exists, defined as having a defined bend and bank in this location." And I, there is a stream there. And so this runoff is going into, they call it a valley, but there's a stream there. And I believe the spring is at, right, as it drains into the lake, there's a spring. So I don't know if things have changed since 2007, but, you know, they're not even recognizing that there's a stream there. So I think they need to look further into this before they say, yes, this is fine, you know, there's no, there's no problem here. So that's the reason.
And Rick, did you want to reclaim your time?
No. But just, the thing that occurs to me about this whole thing is that these, this is, where they're putting this development is the source waters for Little Woking Lake, which runs into Big Woking Lake, which runs into Silkus Lake. And anything you do that damages the highest source water for those lakes affects everybody that takes water. Well, it affects recreation and everything else, but hundreds of people take water out of the lake to drink, including, including my family. You really need to think twice about taking the top water source and developing it into a subdivision. That's.
Thank you all for your input. Is there any citizen input on items not discussed in the public hearing, other than what we just dealt with? Okay. Presentations and training, successful governance for local officials protecting rights. Jamie, you want to talk about that?
We didn't set it up for this evening. I did set an account up for each councillor with our own individual password to go online to the CIS website and take that training. I have not, I was going to check on all of you to see how you've done. Two of them I know have not done it. Three, if you count Susan, because she's not here. And maybe she did it before she left. I don't know. But can I get a show of hands of people who've done it, just out of curiosity? Has anybody taken the class online yet?
This was just set up very recently, is that right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all need to go stand in the corner.
Yes.
Well, no, I say we look at, well, one thing you need to know is that if we don't do the training the way CIS wants us to get it done, they can cancel our insurance, and we don't want that to happen. Do I think they will? Probably not. But, so we really should get the training done. It's 30 minutes. It's easy to do online. Duke, you're going to come into the office, and we'll set you up so that you can do it here.
When are you going to do that?
Tomorrow, noon. But I'll set up a time depending on the two minutes.
Okay. It's easy to do it online, though, once you get it down, you know, once you get into it. So, okay, well, I'm going to be the, yeah.
Correct the whip.
I'm going to be the whipping. Hold the whip.
All right. Next is James Graham, Partnership Specialist, US Census Bureau Census presentation.
Good thing I had it warmed up already. My name is Jim Graham. I am a partnership specialist with the US Census. And as partnership specialist, my role is to go out into the communities in my territory. My territory is California line through Tillamook along the coast. I also have Pope and Yamho counties. And to go out to local governments and community organizations and seek to get cooperation in getting what we call hard-to-count populations fully enumerated and fully counted, my goal is to help the communities and organizations in my territory achieve a complete and accurate census. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about how that comes to pass. Why do we conduct the decennial census? It's Article One, Section Two of the US Constitution. Every person in the United States shall be enumerated every 10 years. The Constitution was written in 1787, in 1790. The first census happened, and it's happened every 10 years since. It's coming up again next year in 2020. My primary message is the census is important, the census is easy, the census is safe. Let me talk about that. What's in it for Dune City? Justice, power, and money. Justice, it covers all sorts of social justice, funding and programs and acts and funding. And funding rolls into the money part, but first let's talk about power. The 435 seats in the US House of Representatives are allocated based on census data, and that rolls all the way down across every component of state and local federal governments, districting, voting districts, down to even where the polling booths are in a district. They try to put a polling booth at the center of mass of the population in a census tract, so it's more convenient to the most people in a census tract as they define voting precincts. Money, $675 billion, federal money, $13.5 billion in Oregon. A large percentage of the $13.5 billion is matched by federal funds or matched by state funds. So the $13.5 coming from the feds is largely matched by another billions from the state. And so that number is actually bigger than it looks on paper. If we pencil that out, it works out to about $3,200 per enumerated person living in the United States. Think of that as $3,200 per person living in Dune City. It's easy. We ask 10 questions. This, if you have a small household, this is less than 15 minutes. If you have a large household, you have to answer the 10 questions for each person. And so it becomes a little bit more difficult. It's still easy. It's easy. We're offering three methods to respond. This year, for the first time, we're offering an online response system. I gather from the council that that may not get a high uptake, but at the US Census Bureau, we're hoping that over half of Americans are going to respond using the online self-response option. We also have a telephone help option and paper census forms. The telephone and online are going to have 13 languages of support options automatically when you, when you use those options to respond. The paper census will come in English and Spanish. If all of that happens and no one, and an address fails to respond to the census, we do what we call non-response follow-up. That's the traditional census taker goes out into the community, knocks on the door, can we ask you these 10 questions? Those people are going to have flashcards with an additional 59 languages. So if they encounter a person that they can't communicate with, they have flashcards with 59, up to the 59th most common language in America, to say, does this word look right? And they'll give you some response or reaction, we hope. And then the enumerator can get the help to find a way to get that person to respond. With that system, we can, we cover over 99.6% of languages spoken in the United States. The census is safe. The data are reported in aggregate only. There's no personal identifying information that can be derived or gleaned from the census data that is publicly divulged. I am prohibited by law from releasing that personal identifying information if I have any, as does every other employee of the US Census. Under Title 13 and Title 26, if I divulge the PII to any other person without need to know outside of the census, or outside of the census, with the need to know inside the census, any person outside the census, or any other government agency, and that includes law enforcement agencies at the federal, state, local level cannot get PII from a census employee. If I divulge that, I can go to prison for five years, $250,000 fine. In the history of Title 13, which goes back to the 1950s, not a single incident of breach of data security has happened as a result of a census employee divulging data inappropriately. And the second side of that, I talked about need to know. I personally will never have PII because as a partnership specialist, I don't have the need to know. My role is not the enumerator at the doorstep. My role is not mangling and massaging the data. My role is talking to the communities and community organizations. Challenges to an accurate census. People who are hard to identify. Think about people who intentionally live in the shadows. Homeless people, people living off the grid and up in the hills, and also young children who are perhaps living in a home with an age restriction on the housing. So grandparents caring for a grandchild, they live in a 55 and older community, they don't want to divulge they have a young child living in the household. So invisible people are hard to identify. They're also hard to reach. The language barriers are the primary thing that make people hard to interview, as well as some of the values, judgments of the people living up in the hills off the grid. Those people are also hardest to persuade. People who have a fear of government or a distrust of government are harder to persuade to respond to a US government census instrument. Altogether, these four, these four factors that keep people from responding to census define hard-to-count populations. I mentioned young children, I mentioned homeless migrant immigrant populations, people living off the grid, rural populations of multiple kinds, renters, poverty, all sorts of factors feed into hard-to-count populations. At the partnership program, my role is, as I've mentioned several times, I go out, I engage, I educate. I'm hoping to give you information tonight that you didn't know before. And mostly, I'm here to encourage you, to encourage everyone you know, everyone you're in contact with, to respond to the census, give us complete and accurate data. And another advantage, going back to the safety factor, if we have a complete and accurate response from an address, no one's coming knocking on the door. So people who are concerned about someone coming to knock on their door, the best way to prevent that is to completely and accurately respond to the census. We're hiring good-paying jobs, $17.50 to $19.50 an hour, right here in the community. We're looking for people in the community to do these jobs. The operation that has just started and is ongoing for another few weeks, we call address canvassing. About a third of the addresses in the United States, someone will, people are driving around the community, looking at addresses, verifying that what they see on the street is what we have in a census database. If it says single-family residence, and it may not be, they're going to go knock on the door and engage with the resident and ask what's going on. Is that RV in the driveway? A residence with the slides popped out, hose hooked up, and a power cord. That's going on right now. Next year, we're hiring 500,000 people nationwide for that non-response follow-up. Knock, 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 can we ask you these 10 questions? My name is Jim Graham. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I believe the next order of business is a proclamation for Dune City to support the 2020 census. I urge you and encourage you to consider that in a positive light, and I would enjoy entertaining any questions, if you have any.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The enumerator at the doorstep.
Yes.
Someone comes to a door, knocks on it, and starts asking those 10 questions. I would assume they have some identification.
They do. They'll be carrying an ID in a holder on their chest. They'll probably hold that up so it doesn't seem like you're inappropriately staring when you're looking at their chest. They'll also be carrying a 2020 census briefcase that it's, you know, turns into about an 11 by 17 placard saying 2020 census. Those things are all relatively easy to fake. Let me pull it out. My, the hardest thing, first of all, I have a portrait layout on my, this means I'm an office worker. I have a chip. My office is my home in Depot Bay. I work at home. The hardest thing, from my understanding, to fake is this Department of Commerce watermark behind the name. Again, this will be in a landscape layout with people coming up to people's doors. But, and this is, it is a real issue. In Pope County in particular, I've heard anecdotally that as far as, a couple of months ago, people were going door to door alleging to be census people checking addresses. That was way before this operation started. And, you know, we don't know what was going on, but it probably was not US Census, and it probably was nefarious. So it's important that people in the community understand that, yes, it's coming, and yes, it's valid, but every bozo that comes to the door saying he's a census worker, she's lying.
What if the property is posted no trespassing? What's the protocol there?
I believe we have access authority because it is required by law to respond to the census.
So if it's posted no trespassing, they're going to come on in?
I believe so. I'll verify that and circle back with Jamie with an answer.
That's the way it was in 2010.
Okay.
Are any of them armed?
No. Are any of you? I don't need an answer to that. I know the answer.
Basically, all of them, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
On those hard-to-count ones, it'll say the homeless and the people living off the grid. Do you just do a plus or minus percentage at the end of the census? I can't see how you're going to get them all.
And we won't. And so the issue there is the city of Dune City needs to look at what's going, what's the, what's the outgame going to be there? If we don't catch the homeless person that's living in Dune City, perhaps has a camp, homeless people don't necessarily wander town to town continuously.
Right.
Most of them have a place they stay. And so if that place is Dune City, and that person is not counted, are they going to cost you resources and law enforcement and support and services and all of those things? Yes. And if they're not counted, that $3,200 there is not this, not there this year, it's not there next year, it's not there for the next 10 years, to help support the burden of supporting that person. Even more importantly, if you think about the children aged three to five that are, under age five, that are hard to count. age five, that are a hard-to-count population, a couple of years, they're going to be in school, that thirty-two-hundred dollars, it's not going to be there, not going to be there, not going to be there. And so that's, that's the issue, and that's, you know, the way it plays out is, it's very important to get those people counted, not because we want to go out and have, and lay eyes on them, but because we want that thirty-two-hundred dollars, we're paying our taxes, sending it off to DC. We want it coming back to our communities because that's where it belongs, and that's where the needs exist.
Very good. Good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are at new business. And I'm A. is a resolution series twenty-nineteen number eleven regarding support for the 2020 census. Do you have any motion to accept this?
I'll move that we accept the resolution supporting the U.S. Census.
Second.
Any group's discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next issue is water testing on Silkus Lake.
Councilor Snow is not here tonight.
Right.
But to reiterate what she said at the bowl setting update, I call it the midterm bowl setting. There have been issues between the Wohink water testers and the Silkus Lake testers, so they've decided to just do two complete separate groups. I don't know, you were there too, is there anything you wanted to say about that?
The only thing I can say is I'm shocked, I'm amazed that there could be a conflict. I mean, Susan was telling us about it last month, it could, it sounded like there was a lot of animosity between the two, and that's just amazing to me.
Why?
I don't know why. I don't.
Did they bring up the different readings?
Yeah.
Well, historically, we've tested Wohink in about six different places every month, and there's only been one place in Silkus that was tested. And I think that there's probably been some inaccuracy because where we've been testing on Silkus is right where the water from Wohink runs into Silkus. So all you're doing is retesting Wohink water. And Wohink being a much deeper lake with more input, maybe doesn't need to be quite as thoroughly tested as Silkus, which is a lot shallower. We have a seventy-foot spot two or three places in Wohink, and there's twenty-two-feet places, two deep places in Silkus. And so I think that with the shallowness of the lake, it behooves us as a city to make sure that this water is as good as it can be as well. And I do not in any way comprehend why water testers from Wohink are afraid of testing water in Silkus, but we need to resolve this.
Yeah.
And I think this is something that Susan's going to have to help lead us through, and we may be talking about this over and over again until we come up with a better resolution. And maybe the resolution is that we're going to have two completely separate water testers.
And that'd be fine, wouldn't it?
I think it would.
That is, we're working on now, they did have a full crew go out and test on Silkus. The only problem was the equipment, because it is much easier if you have a set of equipment that's just for Silkus and a set that's just for Wohink.
If that's what it's going.
Separate from the lab. No, the stuff in the lab would stay the same, we wouldn't need the really expensive microscopes and all that stuff. But, and so I was waiting for Steve Hager to get back to talk to me about what was needed. In the meantime, Kyle Terry from the Saylesla Watershed Council stopped by on another issue when we got to talking about it, and they have a lot of that equipment that they are no longer using. And like, like Dune City's equipment, it is actually owned by Department of Environmental Quality, and they loaned it to the Watershed Council. So I contacted Nick Hackston with the Waters, with the DEQ, and asked him if it was possible to get permission for us to have, to use that equipment. And Nick is going to, he didn't see a problem with it, but we're going, he wants to talk about the program. He was not even aware that Dune City had the QAPB. Apparently, there was a breakdown in communication when he left, when the last guy left and he took over. He didn't really, wasn't even aware we had a program that is actually sanctioned by DEQ. And so now we're all getting started, and we're going to have a teleconference tomorrow afternoon, talk about what our program involves. He has a copy of our QAPB now, and he's going to go online and look at what the test results have been and that sort of thing. And then he's sending me the forms that I need to fill out to ensure that data gets into the DEQ database like it was fully intended to do in the first place.
Do you think either of these two groups would be willing and able to test Little Wohink?
Little Wohink is a private reservoir. It is privately owned, so according to the, last time I talked to Susan, the water master, she said they would need to get permission from the property owner, the person who owns the reservoir, and that is Mr. DeBry, this guy that wants to do the subdivision.
Well, I could really see a purpose in having two different, taking your boat out, putting it in, testing one, like taking it out, moving two miles, putting it back in the lake. That's, that's half a day's project, right there, taking your boat in and out twice.
And if you're going to use the equipment on two lakes, you have to clean it before you go to the other lake.
And cleaning, also with the trouble about invasive species, you're really supposed to clean your whole boat.
Yeah.
So two separate boats.
So it's probably the best solution, two separate testers.
As long as we have that many volunteers, and right now we do.
Yeah.
I think one other thing, you get people that live on a lake like Wohink, they care about it, you know, and they're going to do a good job and want to be part of the program. I think this might actually keep more volunteers coming forth because they're going to live on Silkus Lake and want to make sure that everything's up to date and tested in multiple places.
It's interesting that you say that, and, but what we discovered right away was that the people who live around Wohink are primarily older and retired or are not working. The people who live around Silkus are usually young families with children who work and aren't available to do testing in the middle of the week. So they're finding that Silkus testing should take place on Saturday or on the weekend, and so I think it's going to work out well.
Sounds like we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Next item is consideration of bids for public emergency storage facilities and property across the city hall.
Again, we talked about this, we talked about this at the goal-setting session. I have two bids. Basically, what I requested was a used cargo container that had been fully insulated, painted with an additional man door and a window with electricity, four lights, and heating and air conditioning, climate control. So that was the request that I sent out, and the two bids I received that were, one is in your package, one for sixteen, six ninety, and the other for fifteen, one seventy-five.
Do you want action on this?
All of those are delivered.
Do you want action on this tonight?
I don't have to, but it would be nice to get rolling because we're getting buried with stuff.
I understand. I'm just wondering if we want the full council or whether the ones that are here can make that decision.
You are for them. However, I'm going to throw one more thing out here. Alan is real familiar with this sort of stuff, and so he may know of a better place to go. And so for that reason, I would suggest that if he would be willing to look into it a little bit.
Do some research, yeah.
Then maybe we table it, put it on.
I'm happy to table it.
My only on this here was, on the first one was eight, it says oak freight, it says slide-off tilt-bed trailer. I've delivered quite a few pretty good-sized buildings, and that is a lot of money to take a building off of a trailer, three thousand, two hundred dollars. You have the item I was there?
They might be just moving piece by piece.
Maybe they've seen the parking lot.
That was my, my one. I just thought that was a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a whole delivery fee.
Which one was that?
First page.
Page eight. This is Conex, so this one's coming from California. I think the other one is actually coming from Bend or somewhere.
Well, I didn't see a delivery fee on the second one.
The second one is twenty-four feet, not forty.
It's much smaller.
Much smaller, yeah. Way smaller.
Thank you for catching that.
Well, Alan's going to do some research, maybe we all know.
Oh, no. The second one's twenty-four, yeah.
Two, three. Yeah. Forty foot. Quarter way down. It sounds like it's done up very nice, and the initial buy-in isn't that bad on it. And putting electricity isn't bad, that's all. The only one jumped out at me was the, I guess that's the whole, it just didn't save it, it says slide-off tilt-bed trailer.
Yeah.
Delivery. You probably.
A little rock on it, too. Yeah.
Oh, well, there would be a, I mean, there's a lot more that we'd need under earthquake standards and that sort of thing.
The one thing about those, it'd be safe and secure, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about any vandalism or anything. Those are pretty nice units.
Are tripping over it here in the office.
Yeah.
Were these on skids?
I'm sorry?
Were these on skids?
I'm not really sure exactly how it was. You're supposed to put in a, basically a foundation so that it's prepared for the slide-on one.
They're the same boxes that they bring in junk from Japan, and they stack them up. So they're, yeah, they're strong enough to stack forty high, you know, on the freighters. They're quite.
So what, and what would Japan have to handle all of them?
Yeah, we hope. Will this be unsightly, and if so, can we do some, what's it going to look like?
I mean, I'm requesting that it be painted.
It sounded like it was painted.
Man, like a bureau?
You'd have to start with a door area.
Out here.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, they want me to go out there and paint that, just to be, stick it in.
Just a big steel box.
That's what I thought, and I, I just want to make sure we're not adding something unsightly to the neighborhood. And if, if so, I think it should be, there should be some nice landscaping around it or something to hide so that it doesn't just stick out there.
We'll see what it looks like. There was some talk in the office, just to let you know what, where we're coming from. I expect to get funding and do what I need to do for a vertical evacuation facility for the people who live here in the event of the big one. The problem is, we've got ten, fifteen thousand people in local camping areas that are being told to come here. And so that's what I'm looking at for this facility, is what are we going to do in here to address those other people? The ones that may or may not be here at the time, but we need to be prepared for something.
Makes sense.
So there was talk about maybe in the future getting a second one, putting a lid, you know, a cover over it so that people have a place to sleep and be out of the weather. So, but for right for now, yes, if it's unsightly, we'll figure something out.
Yeah.
So Alan's going to do a little research and then?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Because I know if the works put down, it's not a lot.
Okay, great. Next item is consideration of appointment of Silkus water testers Gary Mizo and Bernard Bisco. Can you have their applications in front of you?
You're here.
Motion to approve these two people?
So moved. Second.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Neat. Consideration of approval for intergovernmental agreement, operations and maintenance services for Dune City. Give us an overview, a quick overview, I think everybody's.
We all know that we have a wonderful public works supervisor who does the best he can. The equipment was down, and he was waiting for parts, and a lot of things all of a sudden came up at once. That's, that's how it, how it works. When the machine's not working, you're going to need it. So it occurred to me that I had to do something, so I ended up calling the city of Florence and asking them to come out and take care of this one particular issue. I don't know whether they've done it or not, but I will be getting a bill for that, we will get a bill for that. I talked to Adam at the county, and they have a regular IGA with a lot of different cities in the county and entities in the county, and so he sent this over. Doesn't mean that they will do it, it doesn't mean that that's my first place to go, it just means that if I need it, it's there.
Tobacco, where it's at.
Seems good.
Would, would we be adopting it in exactly this form? In other words, I did, there's one correction I wanted to make here, if that's the case. And that was in item five, effective date and duration, that shouldn't read July twenty-first, twenty-seventeen.
No, it probably shouldn't.
But I didn't know if this was the actual document or if this is just a template.
I asked him to send me a sample.
Okay. That's mine.
So would the S three of Congress twenty-nineteen?
Or at least I'm the same yet.
The duration would stay the same though, Jamie? Probably.
I'm wondering, I mean, we can look at it, I haven't really read it all that many years.
Do you want to put that on the agenda?
Before we decide on that, this, Jamie, if I understand, doesn't obligate us to anything, it simply says if we need it, it's here.
And how to get it.
I'm going to ask him if he can put a rate in, and if it means it's subject to change every year, because right now there are no numbers in it. And I would like to have some idea of what the rate will be.
Just a maximum of fifty thousand.
Yeah, well, I'm not paying a fifty, but.
Yeah, that would, that would be a good idea.
Aren't we, as taxpayers, paying something toward this kind of thing anyway?
Not on our roads.
Not on our roads. For the county roads, but not for it.
Yeah, and the county roads are maintained by the county, and the state roads are maintained by the state. If a deer is killed on a county road or a city road, I drive it to the county road, they'd grab it, I'd drive it to the state, you know, I'm teasing.
So this would be for Dune City streets?
Right, this would be for Dune City streets.
And only in an emergency.
And only Dune City streets, not private roads in Dune City, and there are a number of those.
So either like a motion or move it to next month?
We can move it till next month if you want. It's up to you guys.
I'm okay with it. Well, it's nothing that's going to cost us unless you make the phone call.
That's right.
But if, if we're going to get a rate in here, that'd be the only thing I would say we should.
Yeah, we need to.
Right.
We'll come up with, I'll talk to him and see if they can offer a solution to my concern.
They start knowing what your annual costs.
And then we'll hopefully we can redraft. I imagine he's going to have to take it to the county commission anyway.
Moving right along. Requesting for approval of seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for training for permit test, Jaslin Kenyon.
Please.
Please?
Please. It is a three-day, the only thing that worries me is if she goes, it's a three-day course in Corvallis. She thankfully has a friend that lives over there that she'll be staying with if she's allowed to go and if we can pay for it. But she should come back with some real knowledge that I fear may make her very valuable to the other communities, what we've got going for us, she lives here, so.
Need a motion to approve this. So moved.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. The last new business is belonging to a policy manual.
Again, I'm planning to catch up with the CIS requirements, this is one of them. I hope you have, all have a chance to go through it, but if not, and you feel like you need to look at it more, then I suggest you table it. I will as soon as it's all done. You guys will have to sign it too, so bear that in mind. You'll have to sign, you're also volunteers.
Do we want to pass it, or do you want to read it again and pass it next month?
I read through it, I mean, the other two. Let's see. Volunteer workers must track and submit hours on a monthly basis to the volunteer coordinator. Now, if I understood this, I mean, clearly volunteers include elected officials, et cetera, community members, this, and water testers and so on, that sounds like it's going to be a little bit hard to do.
We've always done it.
We have.
And your hours are in the. Your hours are in the minutes, all we have to do is...
'Cause I've never submitted my hours.
No.
But you do.
But we do.
Thank you guys.
And water testers, that you'll probably noticed it in the kitchen, maybe you have that, but water testers have a volunteer sign on it.
And they always notice that you come in.
And there's one each boat.
That's been noted?
Yes.
Great.
So we do track the volunteers' time.
Okay.
All right, sounds like those issues have been cleared up. Do we have a motion?
Sub move. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, second to five, to seven, nine?
Aye.
Any votes? Tests unanimously?
If I may, the city councilors, please consider the copy in your binder as your copy. I need you to sign it and give me a copy of your signature page.
I know. You just need that page, right?
Yes, just the page. The others are your information, your files.
All right. Pass them in. We don't have an executive session? Home business is a selection of a company, you have to replace, replacement of water meters. Are we ready to do that, or do we want the full council?
Well, actually, Alan called me.
I've got another monkey wrench to throw in this.
That's a good one.
It was suggested to me by, oh, I'm stupid, the salesman from Dollar's, he's a fellow who supplies a lot of the equipment, that we already have several water companies in town with all the equipment that already do all this testing, and he was suggesting we contact them and maybe enter a contract with them, because they, you know, it's gonna cost us $25,000 or so to buy the computer, buy the program, buy all that. They have it. They can do all that and email Jamie my numbers once a month.
Wow.
And this guy, he doing it.
He offered that up, isn't that gonna cost him money?
Yeah.
He's great.
That's weird.
What they hold on to him?
Well, should we get a formal presentation again?
Well, we've already had one. The question would be, right now, the entity that has that equipment is South Coast Water District, and it is being operated by the Oregon Water Services, who used to be one of the same, but recently South Coast sold and is under new ownership. I was trying to get information today from Randy, whether the new owner bought the software and all the meters with it, or does it still belong to Oregon Water Services, who was doing the meter reading for South Coast anyway, and that contract is continuing. And Randy's out of town, and Dan was not sure, he thought it was doable, but has to wait until his dad gets back, so. And it just, I mean, I was gonna do that anyway.
All right, but it sounds like this is something that you really need to follow through.
Yeah. I thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, it is.
And we don't have to train anybody, though.
All right, well, let's move to that direction, and see if we can get all that stolen, get them put to bed. And new, no, reports. Mayor's report, is it not here? Can there be a report near the center?
Jamie showed me some eye wash, emergency eye wash system that we're gonna mount for, one in the kitchen area, and then one in each of our three bathrooms, so that'll be good. We'll take care of that ASAP.
Okay. And we've talked about the water quality, and we'll have a better report in months to come, since we're gonna be testing both lakes, and you're gonna make sure that the owner of the water rights, Little Wohink, will figure out what to do about testing there too.
Well, someone needs to ask, yeah. Would you want it to be me?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about public works maintenance supervisors' report?
I will tell you that Richard has been working on Levitt Loop, where that, actually, I guess a woman drove into the ditch this last week and got stuck, and it took two truck trucks to pull her out. It is a huge hole, it really is, was a huge hole.
Was, was.
Yeah, and it's all been fixed, it looks great.
I went by there today, it's amazing.
Yeah, it looks very nice.
He did a heck of a job on that thing.
I'm hoping that it will work. It doesn't address the other side of the street, where people have all their gutters running right out into the, down the driveway into the road, but I have sent letters to a couple of those people now, asking them to consider putting in a Silkus trench to capture some of that, so we'll see how that works out.
Okay, great. Emergency services report?
Bob and I attended the WeLa meeting, and Megan always gives us, on behalf of the city of Florence, always gives us update on the construction schedules and what's gonna be going on. Emergency services sent us correspondence regarding updating the wildfire protection plan, and she also sent us information regarding the upcoming Oregon Emergency Management Conference. We will be holding a special meeting at nine o'clock on Monday to start doing a review of the emergency operations plan and discussion of the functions, and actually starting to assign, which is the thing that we've been all waiting all along, is assign positions to people, or even, like, this is the job of the mayor, or this is the job of the city manager, or whatever, and put those positions named, so we know if an emergency should have a warm body. And it's supposed to be three layers thick, so it's supposed to be a warm body, another one to take the place, and another one to take the place, in hopes that three is enough to cover. Anyway, that starts on Monday.
Okay.
And Matt did want us to remind everybody that CPR training is offered at Westlake Amulus the second Saturday of every month. That's just on...
All right, and your administrative recorder planning staff report?
Eight permits were issued in July. We're continuing to move forward correcting the deficiencies for the audit by the Oregon Division of Land Conservation and Development with regard to the National Flood Incident Plan Audit, and we're also working with the CIS to correct those audit deficiencies. The water data has now been completely reviewed, I have corrected everything, I now have strong confidence in those numbers, sent that to the attorney, and hopefully, I've requested that we have a teleconference with her, so that we can discuss options for the next move with regard to those water rights.
Okay, great.
I gotta say this, this one just really disturbs me.
Yeah.
I received a call about a dead deer in Wohink Lake, and I didn't, I have no way to go get a deer out of the water, and it had been there for a couple of days anyway, so I'm sure it would not have been an easy task to do. So I contacted the state police, well, first I contacted the sheriff's office, and they said they wouldn't help. And then I contacted the state police and at least got someone who said, I don't have any equipment right now, I don't have any, well, he didn't say he didn't have any equipment, he said he didn't have anybody to run any of his equipment right now. But he contacted the sheriff's office, and then the sheriff's office contacted me, told me they were looking into it, because I said, you know, this is a water source. It's a big thing if a dead animal dies in a water source when it's a city water source, so, you know, why not? And they did a bunch of checking, they called back about an hour later, and they said, no, it is perfectly natural for animals to die in a water body, and if it's a drinking water source, that it doesn't matter, that's what you chose to do by living in a lake and drawing your water out of the lake. So I still think it's odd, and I did fire off an email to the drinking water division of the upstate lands, but I haven't heard anything. I mean, it's like, maybe they don't wanna go there.
Where on Wohink is it?
It was at the end of Woodland Lane.
End of what?
Woodland Lane.
Oh, yeah.
There have been several deer deaths in the area that cannot be directly attributed to motor vehicles or predators. It's important for residents and visitors to be aware that feeding deer fermentable carbohydrates such as corn or bread can cause acidosis, which is painful and deadly to deer. We suspect that that may be why the one in the lake died.
Yeah, could be.
Is because someone had fed it food that, quite frankly, deer are not supposed to eat, so I do want to get the word out, people, you may think you're helping them and being nice and have fun and furry, but you're likely to cause them death.
All right, thank you. For the good of the order, anything?
I just wonder if there's a volunteer around, I can't do it, but to go out and snag that deer and drag it up the bank and get it out of there. I don't know anybody, but... Is it floating, Jim?
Not anymore. It's more like a mass, he described it, I spoke to him today, and he described it as a mass of yellow blob.
Okay, wow.
Catfish are clean up.
Yeah.
Duke, all the crop guys, what do you think?
I am probably moving out of the city sometime in the next month. Housing market's up, sell the house.
Did you sell your place?
Not yet, but working on it, so. I'll still be very close, but not within the city limits.
Is that a requirement for, to be a council?
We're discussing whether it was to be elected or to stay.
As I understand it, but I would have to confirm, if you are living here when you were elected, you can finish your term, but I will have to confirm that.
It seems to me we did that a couple years back.
Well, I was also trying to remember when...
Was it Maury?
Yeah, it was Maury.
Sanders, when he moved, I think that's when he quit.
Okay.
Well, pretty close.
Yeah. The other option is for us to make sure that we're there if anybody's looking at this house.
Outbid them.
Just let them get to know us.
No good.
Just tell them deer died there.
Yeah.
I'll hand him my placard, you're now a council.
Bob, anything to go there?
Thanks.
All right, can we get you out of here, time?
You've done beautiful jobs.
Well, I ran three minutes, or four minutes over for council. So, anyone want to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.
Call of the favor?
Aye.
Yes, we're done deal.
You are really still. Nice job.
Yeah.
Thank you all.